Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Emergency Council Meeting of the City of Tracy, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, July 30, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to, uh, here and discuss the resignation of Chris Ambule. So, I guess we will, uh, we'll get on, get on with the business at hand. Um, Mr. Ambule?
Um, well, as you saw in your packet, I formally request to submit my resignation for city administrator effective August 9th, 2019.
Okay, so, we need a motion to accept that, or is there any discussion? Anybody have anything to say, questions?
I'd just make a motion to accept it if you guys wanted to. Well, I can't.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
There will be a resolution at the next meeting, to that effect.
Okay. So, let's move into the vote.
Uh, Jerry Shones?
Yep.
Koutou?
Aye.
Dave Teigs?
Aye.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Although it pains me to do so.
With that being said, I think I'm gonna excuse myself from the rest of the meeting 'cause I'm not sure I'm going to apply for the city administrator position. I really am not sure I'm going to. But in case I do, I don't want to be a part of any thing that you're gonna be talking about, what you're gonna put in the newspaper. I don't want to be any influence on anything that you have out there, if that's okay.
Does anybody have an issue with that? Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so, advertised for the city administrator position in the description. Do we have something on that? No?
Um, I guess you, you guys should discuss it. I, I think the last process that you used was a little too lengthy, and there are some better processes out there. If you want me to weigh in and give you some advice, I've been on the other side of it multiple times, so I'd be more than willing to give you some suggestions, but I'd be willing to sit here and be quiet, too, if you want me to.
I would welcome your input. We still got you for a few days.
Yes, I would recommend putting it on the League of Minnesota Cities website for two to three weeks. Uh, three weeks would be probably the better. I would, um, I would recommend increasing the wage a little bit because of, you know, that doesn't mean that you necessarily will have to give a candidate that amount, but there are candidates that look at it, and when, in this industry, when you look below the $100,000 mark is the top pay, people leave, they walk away from that, and I, that's a recommendation from me.
You're just saying, increase the scale?
The scale, yeah. You know, you look at where, where you placed me in the scale, and that should be, you should use that as your parameters of what you feel the top is versus the bottom and such. I would, then, there's a few things that I would recommend. I would recommend an open house before you interview the candidates. Break them down however you want to, but then I would recommend an open house, and have members from the public come to the open house. Write down on, um, you know, depending if you break down to three, four candidates, whatever you decide, have the members of the public and distinguished guests or whoever you want, provide the council with comments, and give yourself time before you interview those candidates to see what the members of the public thought. And then I would recommend that all five council members be on the interview panel, uh, the final interview panel of council, or with the members, and that can be, um, and then select the candidate from there. If you, I've seen this play out many times, if you follow those kind of guidelines and add or subtract whatever you want for that, I feel you could have the position filled in 60 to 90 days in that format. There are good candidates out there. I've competed with them in the past, so they're out there.
So, you think the only advertising we would need to do is in the, on the League's website?
I will tell you that everybody looking for a city administrator job in the state of Minnesota knows very well to look at the League's website. And most people do not go on IMCA, which is the last one that you advertise on. I found it by dumb luck, for better, better or worse, and you did not advertise in the League that I knew of, I did not see it on there. And, uh, you have people scour that, the League website, so. I think it's, and it's free. It's, it's, you get it for free as part of your being a big hamburger.
Kind of the USA jobs of administrators? Okay, anybody have anything further on that?
Well, um, as far as the, the description, is the description that we used the last time, I know we were concerned of how some of the things were worded, and we made some changes. I'm wondering if we need to review that and have you review it, since you've been in the job now for over a year, to see how accurate it is for a description to get somebody to...
Sure. Um, so, the process to do that without, um, you could either meet again to, to review it later, or I could draft it up for you on, on behalf of the council and email it to you all, and then individually, you could email back to me, um, any changes or any suggestions you have. I could make a, a final revision and, and just say, if anybody has any objections to this, please let me know by this date, or I'll post it, if that's how you'd like to go. Otherwise, you can write it, draft it, and then the council should meet again and then make changes as they see fit. But you can't communicate between each other, so you have to use, you know, a medium for that.
I guess I, I'd like to do that, 'cause I think that would probably speed it along a little faster.
We don't have to meet again in order to approve it, we can just, if we all, if you just do like a final draft, send it out to us, and we all send back a, go with it.
Yeah.
We could have it out this week almost, depending, you know.
I would suggest that you set a top-scale pay. My suggestion would be to break the $100,000 mark, maybe go like 106, 107, something like that, just so it's got those three digits in it, because there are candidates that will score right past it, if it doesn't have that on it. And if you find somebody that comes in here with 25 years' experience and just is looking for a city to finish their career out in, that might be worth it for you, versus I'm skimming over it. Right now, it tops out at, uh, 96.4, I think?
Um, well, it's in power leads.
And, you know, that's, it's one of those things where regardless of what you put for, you know, it's a ridic, you know, there's a ridiculous margin between there of, of scale, but I, you know, I'm using that, 'cause I've talked to other people, I've talked to other administrators and other councils and stuff, too, and they all said, once they, once they put over $100,000, they got way more applicants.
Well, that was the problem they had last time around, is because the, the quality applicants were going to Iowa, 'cause Iowa broke the six-figure mark for the starting.
Iowa and Illinois has stole more candidates from Minnesota than anywhere else. In fact, they both advertise on League of Minnesota Cities just to do that.
Yep.
So... So, right now, we're at 99,278 is our top of the scale.
Okay.
So, if we go up...
And if you did a percentage, then that would, that would make it easy for the scale, if you said...
We go up 3%, it would go up to 102,000. I mean, we can go up more, 'cause it's, it's not what we're saying we're offering.
No, you still get to offer in that range, depending on experience.
Yep.
But then we gotta adjust the whole range from the starting...
You don't have to worry about that until after you get somebody in for...
Right.
Yep, you hire them and then negotiate with them.
That's just a...
Yep.
Tool.
So, we, we wanna decide on that right now.
Well, it'd be, you'd want it in your advertisement.
Yeah.
You wanna range, and I, just to throw it out as an example, I'd say salary based on, you know, based on experience from anywhere from 80 to 105,000 a year, plus benefits.
Well, she added, if she added 10%, so then I'd just take every number on that scale and add 10%.
Well, this is, no, that's 5%.
Well, it was 5%. It was 104, 241.
Yep.
So, that would be right in line with what you're talking, if you added 5%.
What's the...
And that's just for guidance, so that you don't have to discuss it later.
What's the lower end of that?
Um, 5% to... Which is right in line with where you're starting.
70 to 105, would be a good window.
Does that include the benefits package, or is that...
No, that's just the wage.
That's the general salary, it's just the wage.
Just the salary, okay. I just wanted to make that clear, so that...
Yep.
Confusion last time with adding the benefits, and all that, had to have a special meeting on...
So, I guess, um, from your discussion, I take it that that sounded reasonable. I, if you made a motion to add 5% to this, that would, that would put you in that scale. You're still, have that same negotiation range that you had before, but it's, I do feel that just seeing that number draws people in, it really does. And like council member Peterson said, they're going to Iowa for it, they're going to Illinois for it.
Okay. So, then...
Did you make a motion, Tony, or did you? When you threw out the numbers, I couldn't...
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it as a motion to have Chris draw up to add, to post on the LMC, that we can view and approve by consensus, and in that ad, salary range starting at 70 up to 105,000 a year.
I'll second.
First and second, further discussion? Let's roll into the vote.
Dave Teigs?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jerry Shones?
Aye.
Koutou?
Aye.
Tony Demers?
Aye.
I will get that, Shane, will you just turn it off? Um, I'll get that email out to you right away in the morning, if you guys all have time to look at it and respond back to me with changes you want, and then any changes that come back, I'll email the final proof of all those changes, and just ask for you to give your blessing on it, you know, or, you know, again, it's not a vote or anything, it's just you telling me what you want to see different in it. If we can make it work, I'll, I'll get it posted immediately to the League of Minnesota Cities website. So then, when would you like it to close? That's, and you don't need a motion on this, just give me a, let's say that we get it posted by...
Well, let's, let's just go that we, it's posted by August 5th. Let's just, you know, give us time, so then run it through like the 23rd, that Friday, that's three weeks, if that makes sense?
Okay.
Too short, too long, just drag?
No, I think that's... So, you'll take applicants till the 23rd?
At 5:00 PM.
When are our meetings scheduled in, in August?
August 26th.
August 26th.
Do you want to post it from, and, and, sorry, not to be too suggestive here, but if we can get it posted by the 31st, and you went three weeks, you could post it until the 21st, you could get a group together to pick applicants by the 21st, have preliminary hearing, or preliminary, uh, divide down your applicants, and then you could actually, um, interview them on the 26th before a council meeting if you wanted, or, or do you want that to be determined? 'Cause a lot of times, it's nice to tell the applicants ahead of time, they're, we're gonna, you're gonna do this, this day, you're gonna do that, that day, and final interviews will be this day. That way, they can kind of plan with, you know, some of them will travel from a long ways, and it's, it's nice to get them notice ahead of time.
But then you can, by what you're saying, there's a plan on an open house or whatever on the 23rd, and then...
Yeah, 'cause if they're applying and they know there's an open house on the 23rd, you know, you could, you could hold an open house on the 23rd, narrow down your candidates that day, or actually, you could narrow down your candidates on the 22nd, invite so many for the open house, hold interviews on the 23rd, and then hire someone and confirm it on the 26th at your council meeting.
Say that again.
So, if you accepted, if you posted the job by the 31st, and you ran it for three weeks, you would accept applications till the 21st. Appoint, um, a group, whatever you as a council decide for an interview committee, to go through applications and narrow it down to the amount of candidates that you suggest. Invite those candidates on the 23rd for an open house, so you can do a meet and greet and things like that. You really get a chance to see how they interact with people and, and also how they interact with their competitors for the position, which is really interesting.
So, that would be an evening thing, then?
Um, no, I would, I would do the, I would do the meet and greet from 2 to 3, give the council a chance to review from 3 to 4, the, um, input from the community on, you know, give them note cards to write on, and then from, uh, from, you know, 4 to 8, you could have hold four interviews, if that's candidate, and I'm just spitballing here, however many candidates you decide, and then you could select a candidate that day and confirm it by the 26th at your city council meeting.
Well, 'cause if, if we're gonna have all five on the final interview committee, we're gonna have to advertise that, 'cause that's gonna be a quorum.
Yeah, and you're allowed to do that.
But I mean, so we're gonna need to set a date, because we have to get...
Yep.
...that notice out timely.
Yep.
One thing about that, that doesn't mean it's, you're gonna get flooded with applicants, and you're not gonna be stuck on that timeline, so I'd use Chris's suggestion, set the dates that way, and then we'll just see what happens.
Yeah, you just put, "City council anticipates holding an open house this day, reviewing candidates this day, and selecting a person this day." And you just put anticipate.
Yep.
'Cause then you can, if you only get two applicants during the first push, you could, you know...
Roll it out.
You know, I'll put right in there that this position remains open till filled.
Right.
But you get it out there early, don't they, and at least plan to travel?
I, 3 weeks is a very adequate time to have it posted. I do feel you can get a, a number of good candidates.
Yeah, generally, it's only like two, if I, in the federal world, anyway, so. That sounds like an acceptable plan to me. Anybody else have input on that?
I'll draft it as such, email to you guys, and take individual suggestions, push out a final draft, and if nobody has anything, I'll get it posted right away. Even if we post it earlier, that's, that's all the more better.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll just go back to that motion before about this, the scale. Is it easier if we go up, like if we say up 6% for us to come up with a scale, or is it to say the 70 to 105?
Um, his, his motion was 70 to 105, and that's the motion that passed, so if you, if you want to make any changes to that...
It'd be easier to go back and correct what you're looking at, Jerry, after we, if, if you hire somebody and they do it for 90, then you adjust your scale to meet what you offered him, just like we did with Chris.
Okay.
Okay, so, that plan does not need a motion or anything, we just...
Nope.
Yep, we just do that.
Nope, it's just advertising a position, it's not a...
Okay, so, now we need to discuss interim. What we, what we want to do in the interim to hiring a new person for the, uh, for the position. Now, as I understand it, um, Chris, you've offered to assist on a part-time basis in the interim?
I will help out in any manner you, that the council requests of me. I do have to limit it to 20 hours or less a week, and I do have a criteria of I cannot go past January 1st, and that is from my new position.
Okay.
And their exact words to the council here, and the fact I get to say it publicly is, they want to, cities work together and they want to help out in any way they can, and there is no good time for an administrator to leave, so they are willing to let me help out in any manner you see appropriate.
Okay. Um, I think it would also be a good idea to have someone to be working with, Chris, since it's a part-time, I mean, this is a full-time position, it takes full-time effort.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, you know, with this transition and everything, the, the paper tiger that comes along with it, and the signing and stuff that crops up all the time, in your opinion, would it be in our best interest to name a full-time intern, and then you work part-time to support him?
Yes, that is, that is, no, I feel like I could monitor the emails, the FEMA stuff, things like that, take, have a laptop, I could take a laptop with me, you know, again, that's city property, so I want you to say that that's okay. Um, and a lot of stuff would be just me pushing and dictating and saying, you know, so I'd still need the council's backing of saying, "Yep, if Chris says to do this, do it," but push it through to, in a person that's local, an interim, you know. I, I can, the meetings that of the new city I'm gonna work at are opposite nights, I can come down and be here for council meetings until you get a new administrator, if you, if you so see fit. Um, I'd just pre-warn you, it is a six-hour drive for me, you know, to come down, and, but I'm willing to, if that's what you want. Um, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever, whatever is the best for Tracy, so.
Well, if there's a certain topic that we would need you for, we, the city did Skype, like when you were, um, you know, where maybe we could look at...
Yeah, that's a possibility as well.
At the Skype option versus you spending six hours.
Yeah.
And I'm paying you six hours.
Well, and I, I agree, I think we need to look at what's, what's best monetarily for the city as well. Um, I'm, again, I'm open for anything, uh, the, my current mayor said, "If you gotta leave at noon, uh, if you gotta leave at noon to go down there on a Monday and prep for a council meeting and be there for them for the council, go ahead." But if I can do it all remotely and, and work with the appointed interim, that's fine, too, again...
I think that would probably be, you know, we're, we all want to do what's best for the city, and I think that that's probably the best answer, because then we have someone here that we can work with, and they can work closely with you, so we're actually getting the benefit of two, um, two folks, and we're not left uncovered. We have someone that's here at the time, you know, that we can go to, or if we need signatures, or any kind of paperwork needs to push out, or, you know, those kinds of things.
And for the record, I won't be offended when the day comes and you say, "We don't need you." I mean, I, I realize that that's, you know, and that's up to you guys, that's, or, you know, "Hey, we only want you to work, we only want you to put in an hour and take care of this for us." That, that's fine, however you want to put it.
So, all that being said, you need to appoint an interim city administrator, the council needs to make a motion and approve it.
Well, I would, uh, I think Shane has been in this position several times in the past, I think he's got a good handle on what's going on. Um, so, if Shane is acceptable to, or if, if he's willing, I should say, unacceptable, if he's willing to accept that position, um, would that, would that work for you?
Yeah, based on your conversation on, you know, your advertisement and your timelines, it works fine for me. 10 months is a little long, but, you know.
See how that pans out for you.
So, but yeah, be glad to help, I mean, had a little bit of discussion with Chris, you know, on some of the stuff that's already coming through the, the line here with phase 1 and phase 2 and phase 3, closeouts, and, you know, I kind of helped Chris along, learning all that, so I guess I know firsthand of what's going on in that regard, and I would say right now, other than FEMA, which Chris actually has a better hand on, than, handle on than I do, um, you know, those are the two major things that we need to make sure everything gets done in a timely manner to keep everything going smooth right now, so. Everything else is just day-to-day issues that we can take care of pretty rapidly, I think, so.
Okay, well, that being said...
There is no disagreement from Shane, I'd make a motion to approve your appointment of him as an interim administrator.
So, I get it.
First and a second, is there any further discussion or questions? Vote?
Dave Teigs?
Yes.
Jerry Shones?
Aye.
Koutou?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye, aye.
Tony Demers? Gotta keep you on your toes.
Okay, so Shane will act as, uh...
To piggyback on that, Chris, FEMA, most of that's telephone and...
Correct, that's very remote work, so that's, that's pretty...
And God only knows when that's gonna be done.
Every day, I think I'm closer. Um, yeah, we're, I'm waiting on one more piece of information from locally here, and then it's still at federal and state levels, so. I do anticipate 30 to 60 days at the most.
So, the next item is handoff duties.
A motion for what?
For you.
Oh, I guess if you want to appoint me in any kind of status or anything, whatever you want. For liability reasons, I would need to continue to be an employee of the city in some facet, that's something that we could go into a closed session and discuss afterwards, if you're gonna go into it with Shane, anyway, to discuss that with him, as an employee thing, so you're welcome to do that.
Yep.
I, I don't know what you, what you want to call it, or what you want to say, but it just, I can't do it as a direct consultant and, and have the liability coverage for the city, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you have to be...
Otherwise, I'd have to carry some sort of insurance policy, and, not to sound callous, but I want to do it to help the city, but I don't want it to cost me money in the, in the process, either.
Oh, understood. So, we need to make a motion on assigning Chris, or, um, keeping Chris on in a part-time status?
You're not even gonna hurt my feelings, you can call it any position you want. You can call it the jester, for all I care, just so that it's official.
Well, as court jester?
The city jester, yeah.
Assistant interim?
The assistant to the interim administrator, till, making a motion to, to appoint Chris as the assistant to the interim administrator for his, for the time necessary to complete the transition of hire, on city payroll.
Not to exceed 20 hours a week, and not to go beyond 1st of the year.
Okay, is it...
That's fine, I mean, those limits were already expressed, so yeah, that's...
Right, yeah, so we'll just make that part of the motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions? Let's go to vote.
Uh, Dave Teigs?
Aye.
Jerry Shones?
Aye.
Koutou?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Anthony Demers?
Aye.
So, motion to appoint Chris Ambule as assistant to the interim administrator, not to exceed 20 hours a week, or January 1st, 2020. Not to exceed 20 hours a week and not to go beyond 1st of the year.
Okay, is it...
That's fine, I mean, those limits were already expressed, so yeah, that's...
Right, yeah, so we'll just make that part of the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions? Let's go to vote.
Uh, Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Kuto.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmers.
Aye. So, motion to appoint Chris Ambule as assistant to the interim administrator, not to exceed 20 hours a week or January 1st, 2020.
I have no new business cards.
I want to tell him I'm still his boss till next week, though.
I'd go on vacation.
Okay, so the handoff duties, what is that involving?
Well, I, had you not appointed an interim or had you not made the motions that you just did, then I felt that you needed identify who needed to do what, but truthfully, me and Shane have such good working relationship already, I don't think it needs to be identified unless you, you would like to for any reason, but...
I don't think we need to right now. I think if you're still around helping out December 1st, then we probably have to make sure everything's in line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we could address down the line, I agree.
But like for now, like you said, I don't think there's any...
Yeah, and I, Jesus, I don't think I'll be here December 1st, so...
Shane's hoping you're not. Okay, so at this time, we will close the open meeting portion of this evening and then, and we'll move into closed meeting to discuss...
Well, I don't think you can because it's not on the agenda and it's an emergency meeting and you gotta stay with the emergency agenda. You can't, I don't believe it's proper to close it without having it listed on the agenda.
It's true.
Okay, well, good point.
Put that on the agenda for the 12th.
We can do it on the 12th.
What I would suggest is, and it's just a suggestion, you know what you were given last time, pick your number, you know what the budget is and what we got, work it out and present something to the council to be acted on.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
At the next meeting.
You guys add it to closed session and Shane could discuss it at the, at the 12th.
Yeah.
I guess the only thing I would ask is, do you want me here on the 12th or not? Because I do have permission to be here on the 12th, I do have...
Skype you, I think, unless there's something major.
You can even do that in a closed session.
Unless there's something you think you want to be here for.
I, you know, we're still building the agenda right now and there are a lot of things that require explanation, but I may be able to do it by memo format. So, do you want me to just leave it open to maybe Shane's discretion? Would you accept that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like he has no experience, so...
Right, yeah.
And then if you need me to Skype in or, or be here, you just tell me. Okay.
Okay, that's great. That should conclude this emergency meeting, I need a...
Can I, wait, before you do that, I, I'm, I don't, you don't need to go into closed session. For me, I'm willing to work for the same wage that I was making now without benefits per hour if you want, or if you want to set so many hours a week and make it whatever format you want, but I, being I won't be here on the 12th, maybe we should set that now. I'm not asking for more.
Nope, no, yeah.
Well, and that's what I was getting at, is if you're okay with us doing that and then...
Your particular hour.
At the next meeting, then we'll hammer that out to what, what it would be, that we can go into close at that time.
It's actually less money for you.
Yeah.
Honestly, if, as long as he's helping me out, I'm willing to do it for the same amount I was doing it before, so...
Well, then...
Then we can be done with this.
Yeah, I mean, then we're done and need, I don't know if you, it's on the record, I don't know if you need a motion to accept it that way. I mean, you're still, you know, part-time status, your hourly rate's gonna remain the same. If you don't want additional compensation, no council required, action is required, and it can be addressed down the road if...
Well, you, you want additional compensation.
Be the same as what last time.
Just the same as last time.
Same as last time. Well, perhaps, and I can appreciate, but perhaps we should, so that it's official on the record, we could do a motion quickly that generalizes that and so that we have it. And then there's no argument later.
You won't say it aloud or...
Yeah, I think last time it was...
Well, you don't have to state the number. I mean, we can say that same as last time because that's on record.
Don't bother me either way. I said it, I think, in record last time, so it's making a difference.
It's researchable.
Yeah. Peril just call and ask for it tomorrow, so let's just do it now.
It was 2,000 a month last time.
So, I would just, if you guys are acceptable to that, me at the wage I'm at now with no benefits and Shane at his 2,000 a month and Shane dictates what hours I work or not, I'm comfortable with that and I'll keep a log of the hours I work and submit it as such to, and I'll submit it to Shane.
Then make a motion effective 10 August, your position will go to a part-time with no benefits, Shane's position will increase by 2,000 a month until such time as the new administrator is hired.
Second.
First and a second, further discussion? Go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Kuto.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Anthony Dimmers.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and a second, discussion, vote.
Again. Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Uh, Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Kuto.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Tony Dimmers.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Do we have to sign our life away tonight or...
I want to thank everyone on the council for coming out for the emergency meeting and being able to make yourself available.